I was not around. Sorry.
Hi. I just don't like to.
Hi.
I think Matt is gonna hold the 22 Main Street report.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna hold that.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready to go. All right, welcome to Freeport Town Council Chambers. Today's June 18th, Tuesday, and this is council meeting 12-24. It is our last council meeting of the fiscal year. We are taking some actions tonight to approve our final budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts about 12 days from now, on July 1. So we have a whole bunch of actions to take, and there'll be lots of words read, but I don't think there's gonna be, well, let's hope that they go smoothly, let's just say. So we have four public hearings that we're gonna hold, and then we're gonna set four public hearings for our next meeting, the first one in July. So that's what our agenda looks like. Please help yourself to a copy of one on the table over there. And our first order is to say the pledge of allegiance, so please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You all can see who's here, but we have to have the official records, so we'll go down the line. Counsel of Pillsbury?
Present.
Counsel of Fornia?
Here.
Counsel Lawrence?
Here.
Counsel Benoit?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counsel Piltch?
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Again, welcome. And we hope to get everybody out in a timely manner this evening, so thanks for coming down for all of your various elements of what you may be interested in talking about. We'll try and move right through with velocity. Our first action item is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 11-24, held on June 4, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, they're moved and seconded to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are accepted. Our next order is some announcements, and I have a few, and then we'll go down the road to see if anybody else has any. The Freeport Women's Club purchased a Ginkgo tree in recognition of their 100th anniversary. The Public Works Department planted the Ginkgo tree at the intersection of Route 1 and Pine Street. We'd like to give credit to Jacetta Sevly Gray for making this happen. Freeport welcomes the Great Race on Friday, June 28. That's a week and a half from now. Route 1 between Howard Place to School Street will be closed from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. on that Friday to allow volunteers and staff to prepare and welcome the Great Race participants. If you don't know what that is or not familiar with it, it's a fantastic collection of historical and antique vehicles from yesteryear that travel across country, and they're making a stop here in Freeport on Friday, the 28th. So we're trying to do our best to recognize that and make it a fun downtown event. So Route 1 downtown will be closed from Howard Place to School Street from 1:00 to 7:00 on Friday, the 28th. And there'll be some signs up, too, to remind folks. The most important part of our comprehensive planning process is you, the general public. So in the coming months, there'll be a number of different opportunities for you to share your thoughts and ideas on the future of Freeport. You can start by visiting the project website for their comprehensive plan, called futurefreeport.org, or is it .com?
.com.
.com, futurefreeport.com. We had a workshop at Freeport Community Services last week. It was very well attended, and I encourage folks to join in. I know the comp plan can seem like kind of boring and mundane, but it's actually really interesting, and it's a chance to really put your fingerprints and voice on what the future of Freeport's going to look like. And we're gonna be conducting a community survey throughout the month of June. We hope to take a few minutes, you take a few minutes, take the survey. As a result, it'll be used to create the vision statement for the comp plan. And so you can get a copy of that survey online, or you can call the Clerk's Office, 865-4743, and stop by Town Hall at 30 Main Street and get a paper copy. And lastly, the town is looking for some volunteers to help out with July 4, with managing the crowds over at Pine Tree Academy where the fireworks will be launched and there's some traffic detail. And so if anybody has an interest in helping out the Police Department and Public Works about how to coordinate that, please get in touch with the manager. We need about eight to 10 folks to help out with that. So great to see fireworks back on the 4th of July in downtown. Other announcements from other councilors? Okay. Our next item is information exchange. This is a chance for councilors to share what's going on with committees, constituent feedback, what folks are hearing and talking about, and follow up on plans that may be coming out of our committees. Any items for information exchange? Can't wait to get to those public hearings. Okay. Our next item is our town manager's report. Sophie.
So I wanna follow in the interest of brevity and tell you that we know that the, there's a heat wave coming. And on, during regular hours, both FCS and the library will be open to the public, and they have air conditioning. So while we can't call them official cooling centers, they're a place that people who are, who need a little bit of cool, a cool place to decompress can go, charge, charge their batteries and their devices. I would suggest that folks look on the website or call ahead. Tomorrow is a holiday for the town. Is it for FCS? FCS will be open tomorrow. And then we'll have Friday and Saturday at FCS. So also, just wanna recognize that this is Caroline Pelletier's last official council meeting as a planner. The next time you see her, she will be the Assistant Town Manager, and I'm very excited for that to happen. And the most important thing is I would love it if Earl Gibson could give us an update on the Hoist at the Wharf.
I apologize. We, a couple council meetings ago, I come to you needing to get some funds to rebuild the lift down at the harbor, because it didn't have a load rating on it. And I quoted you $30,000. I was way off. I mean, way off. So we had a engineer come down and look at the lift, give us a set of plans of what it should be. We met with a group that uses the lift more importantly. And what their needs are and what the lift capability is now doesn't match. So what we're trying to do is match together that when we do this, it's going to be something that's gonna be there for a while. I'm not ready to give you that number. I'm just gonna tell you it's going to be different than the first number I gave you, $30,000. Hope to be coming back to you in about two to three weeks with that number. So we're running a little late. They all agreed that we should slow down and make sure that we were getting what we needed down there at the harbor. I'll answer any questions you have. Yes, sir.
This is including work on the boom. So the boom and the winch now will be matched, correct?
We're completely replacing the whole unit.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we, and a little bit of structure work on the dock that needs to be done to support it. The main thing is, the lift that we have now has about a quarter swing. The new lift will be 360-degree swings. So you would actually have to, if you imagine this at the harbor, you'd have a boat loading here, and another one that could be loading here, and they could be swinging back and forth.
The quote, or the estimate of $30,000, how do we get to that number? And is there another way to get another quote from somebody else, or is this kind of final?
That was what the apology was for. There was some misunderstanding in the first quote that come about what was being replaced. And I'll go ahead and reluctantly share some numbers with you. They come back just to replace what we existing have is $48,000. So we need to up that just a little bit to get something that's going to last us for a while, because replacement of what we have and the people that use it every day express concerns over that. So that's one reason to step it up a little bit. Now, I don't anticipate that going much above that, but it will be an increase.
You said 48?
Yes.
Matt?
How are we gonna cover this knowing that we don't have an exact number and we're voting on the budget?
So my plan would be for us to leave the Cove, the Spar Cove Road project in the capital budget and not let it lapse. The project is done, but there is approximately $54,000 left in that account, which should get us where we wanna go.
I'm hoping so, yes. That, yes, she is correct. There's still a little bit of money left in that Spar Cove account that would cover this. I'd go towards it.
And if you're so inclined in July, you can rename that to the Hoist and just put all the money there. But for right now, it's easier, I think, for you to leave it and make that decision in July. Does that work? Okay.
Thanks, Earl. That's a vital piece of equipment for a significant number of businesses operating in Freeport, so glad we can get that done.
I think the other piece of this that's really important is we're able to understand what the need is and how to best meet the need, because members of the community that are actually using the infrastructure have come to us. And when we know what's going on, it makes it a lot easier to meet people's needs.
Anything else in the report, Sophie? Okay, very good. Our next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you are here to address the council on a particular thing or share what's on your mind about something that's not part of the four public hearings that we're gonna have, or the four that we're setting for July 2, this would be the time to come forward. And if anyone has any comments they'd like to make, we ask you to please introduce yourself. And we do try and keep the public comment to three minutes in the interest of time of others that may wanna speak. So please introduce yourself, let us know where you're coming from, and the microphone's open.
Hi, my name is Chalmers Hardenberg, 11 Somerset. I have some comments about the budget and the FEDC part. I'm not sure whether there'll be an opportunity later on, or whether I should make those now.
We are gonna be talking about FEDC during the TIF portion of the budget approval.
I'm happy to wait if...
So I think, yeah, that seems like that's listed on the agenda, so we can probably have some comment then.
Okay.
My name is Daniel Freund, and I reside at 38 Cheehawke Road. I distributed some materials, which are printouts of emails that have been sent. You might not have had a chance to read them. Thank Counselor Egan for responding to me shortly before the meeting, and I have a response to that. So I wanna clarify a few things for people. Just for your information, I have over 40 years' experience in insurance, over 30 years' experience in software. I'm a chartered financial consultant and a certified financial planner. I've spent years researching this matter, and I seriously believe that the council is not meeting its fiduciary responsibilities in a number of areas. That is one of my major concerns. When I have asked about, you know, these matters, I'm told that there are advisors that are saying that, you know, everything is fine. I'm asking that someone from the council or the town manager inform me who this individual is who is advising that everything is hunky-dory. I am not asking the town to represent the company, never did. I have never made a proposal to either trust. I have never had a conversation with them, as neither one will speak with me, because I don't have standing. The issue has been about asking the council to make, to send one email to establish standing. I have had discussions with both Senator King's office and the U.S. Department of Labor, and they're both very interested, and they believe that I have a worthy issue here. The issue of dependent eligibility, et cetera, is not restricted to Freeport. Listen carefully, friends. As an employer, the town of Freeport is collecting money from employees. You have a fiduciary responsibility to not go out and go to the track or otherwise misspend the money, okay? When the trust was asked, Kristy Gould was asked if they are doing anything about dependent eligibility, she said no. When I spoke with the trustee myself last Friday, that individual, Greg LaRue, from Echo Main, said, "We don't do that. We delegate that," okay? The trust says at its website that there are over 450 organizations, over 20,000 people, over 6,000 there, over 39,000 enrolled in MEA, okay? None of the parties that I've spoken with so far, other than the city of Portland, have any official systems to keep track of any of this stuff. I've run out of time again. I ask that the trust, that the council allocate some time so that this discussion can happen in three-minute increments every other week. This is an important matter. Please read your materials. Please contact me. Thank you.
We will have a segment on the agenda later on for those online wishing to make public comment, but I don't see any other hands going up, so we'll keep moving. Our next item on the agenda is the start of our action items, and the first one is our consent agenda. To consider action relative to adopting the June 18, 2024 consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. This is a new format in that the consent agenda is embedded right into our regular agenda. So there's a license renewal for Freeport Oyster Bar. There is an acceptance of funds to the Dr. Gould Trust Fund and accepting the resignation of a local citizen from the Police Advisory Committee. Any reason to take any of those three items off the consent agenda for discussion? All right, be it ordered that the June 18, 2024 consent agenda be adopted?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's approved? Great. All right. This is what everybody's been waiting for, the public hearings. Our first item is number 164-24, to consider action relative to the repeal and replacement of Chapter 16 floodplain management ordinance. I will open the public hearing, and then we'll have some discussion at the council after we have heard from the general public on this particular matter. Nick, you're gonna lead us through this language. Maybe you can just give a summary so the general public has a sense of which part of this we're focusing on today.
Sure. So our existing Chapter 16 floodplain ordinance, I'm just proposing to repeal that and just adopt all new language. Reason behind that is there was a lot of, like, a bunch of different changes in there, like changing the code enforcement officer to the codes enforcement officer, planning board, the project review board, there were just all kinds of different places, labeling out the correct engineer titles, correct surveying titles. The other kind of changes that were getting adopted throughout is the datum, which is like the vertical datum on how you measure the elevation of the base flood elevation. So that's being changed from NAGV 29 to NVA D 88. What's, so it's different, basically the flood elevations kinda stay in the same, but it's six tenths of an inch difference. But if you look at the numbers, they're a little bit skewed, but they are rising in a bunch of places. But in order to have, we need to have this ordinance adopted with the maps by June 20 to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program, which is one program that people can have in order to have flood insurance on their property. One of the big changes that we discussed last meeting was the requirement that, the state was requiring all municipalities to adopt on coastal floodplains, any alterations for like shoreline stabilization, other things like that, that change the natural features of the shore, or any wharfs in a velocity zone would have to be stamped by a professional engineer. We worked for quite a while, about a month, and we've now changed that language from the last meeting, and now we define it as a qualified professional. So that is a new definition, and in those two sections, you'll see qualified professional that basically if they're not a professional engineer, they have to show proof that they have, they're qualified to do the application, and they have to prove that to the, either the code enforcement officer, in some cases might be the project review board, but most likely my office. And a couple of the other we changed, we took the fees out of the ordinances, because we're trying to take all fees out of ordinances and just keep them on the fee schedule so you don't have to go through the whole ordinance process. And I'm trying to think. Another big, what everybody used to call the 100-year flood, so everybody thinks it's 100-year, you're only gonna get it once every 100 years. So it's kinda getting changed in here to the base flood elevation is known as the 1% flood, which is one in every 100 years. But it's kinda getting that language of the 100-year flood out. As far, that's pretty much the ordinance language. The maps are going from these 1985 maps to, which there's like, I think there's eight of them, seven or eight of them, to now digital maps, which has aerial photography on them. But we now have like 15 or 16 maps, because it's now done by county, not by town. So little portions will be in Powell and Freeport, or in the Armith and Freeport, and so and so. But I'll answer any questions about particulars in the ordinance or the maps, if anybody has them, or we can wait till the public hearing.
Yeah, stick around. I'm sure the council will have some questions, but we just wanted to get some context out. Anyone? to get some context out. Anyone in the public wishing to testify at the public hearing on the reimplementation of our floodplain language in our ordinance? All right, not seeing any hands. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring the conversation up to the council. I'll just note that just before the meeting, there's an amendment to the changes that was put forth by Caroline, and she asked me to make sure that we're adding the amendment to the language.
That's in the next one.
Oh, so I'm sorry, it's in the next one. Never mind. Next public hearing, getting ahead of myself. Questions for Nick? Darrell, or Eric, go ahead.
Just related to the engineering piece on the warfs in particular, I know we've had a lot of conversation, and first of all, I appreciate your work with the state to try to fix that language. Could you just give us an example of, I'm looking at the definition of qualified professional, somebody who's either licensed by the state or could be locally licensed. Who might that, could that, could that be a contractor who's licensed, somebody other than an engineer?
Yeah, so I would say on our wharf applications, probably 5% of them are done by an engineer. The majority of them are done by consultants or marine contractors, and those consultants range from like wetland scientists that, you know, delineate where the, you know, the upland edge of the coastal wetland and the type of vegetation and stuff, to consultants that don't have any degrees or anything like that, but they hate, they've been designing wharfs, so they've been doing shoreline stabilization for 30 years or things like that. That's kind of like how we would probably, most likely everybody that's been doing them now would still be qualified, in my opinion.
Okay. And so your office would essentially be the one to say, yes, this is a qualified professional, based on their credentials?
I think so. I think that's, that's the best language we could get from the state and FEMA in the time that we had.
Thank you.
Darrell?
Pretty much the same language. My opinion is the state backdooring that all work now will be done by a qualified professional. They tried to make it that all the work would be done by an engineer, and there was backlash from the public and also from this council, and I think that was, was the right move. I think this is too broad. I think it needs to be focused to where it's a wharf that is done for some sort of business that is done at the seashore where the public is down there. That needs to be engineered. I have no problems with that. However, where I have an issue is wharfs that have been around for a number of years that may need to be fixed after the winter storms we had this year, or whatever. Now we're putting an additional burden on the citizens, or whatever. So I don't know if this section was taken out, if we were qualified for the national floodplain or not. That might be a test, but I'm uncomfortable with that particular section, because I think that's putting additional burdens on our citizens. Still kind of, it's not as bad as it was. It's better, but we're still backdooring it.
Yeah, on the wharf part, it is only permanent wharfs, so the seasonal portions wouldn't have to. There are provisions about repair and maintenance of wharfs and other things like that, that probably wouldn't fall underneath that section. So if there are some that you're just going to repair or maintain, other things, I wouldn't say that you'd have to have, would comply with that section, because they're already there. They're not actually into the flood zones. I'm not sure that would apply, but we did reach out to the town's council about it, and they said we should go with what the state and FEMA is going with, because there's a possibility we could get kicked out of the program. But that's just our, the council's.
Joanna?
So I just have a, I think I just want to take a step back, and could you kind of summarize in two sentences what this change will, how this will impact folks on the ground?
For shoreline stabilization, or for the wharf, or both?
For the big picture of this ordinance change.
So currently, right now, like I said, about probably, it might even be less than 10%, or maybe 5%, like Barney, who's here, are done by professional engineers. Most of them come in through like three or four different consulting or marine contracting. So if it went through professional engineer, all of those wouldn't be able to provide any applications. They'd have to get another engineer to stamp all their plans and review all their plans. So that was going to be a huge burden. This language, we had it. We went back and forth with trying to do marine contract, and trying to do wetlands, and we tried all kinds of things. Only then that FEMA and the state and the time that we worked on came up with this qualified professional, so that way, it's somebody that has, the problem with the original language, I guess, let me move back, is that it had, it said you had to be engineer to an engineering practice. We had to get that out of there to say it's to a standard, not engineering, because then it falls under the state. Once you put the word engineer in, then the state rules say you have to be an engineer to do it. So I think there's still room to work on it, and I think there's still going to be some discussions on trying to change some of the things. But I think at this time, given that we have a couple days to get it done, I would, I would recommend moving forward with what it says, and then we'll definitely work on, I still have a couple other contractors and other people like that, we're trying to get with the state to change them.
I think one of my questions is too, is does this language satisfy, have we confirmed it satisfies the FEMA requirements?
Yes. FEMA's agreed it, and it will satisfy everybody that has applied for any permits through my office since I've been here. The only person that wouldn't, wouldn't apply would be a homeowner, but most, I haven't seen a homeowner apply for a wharf permit. That's not a temporary, so it wouldn't apply to the temporary.
All right. If there's no other questions, then I think we can go ahead and read the order. Counsel Pilsbury, could you start us off with item number 164-24?
Sure. Be it ordained that the repeal and replacement of Chapter 16 floodplain management ordinance be approved?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. No further questions. We'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Six to one. All right. Thank you. So that motion carries. Thanks, Nick. Don't go too far, because we have some others here, but I beg the indulgence of the council, and I invited a member of the public to come and speak during non-agenda items, and we were so efficient. I had advised this party to be here by 6:45, and we've already been through that. So rather than make these folks wait till, you know, God knows how long it's going to take us to get through the agenda, I'd like to just invite some members of the public to talk about a basketball court and the historic significance of something that happened 25 years, more than 25 years ago, that is about to get some new life put into it without any dollars from the town. So just a quick announcement about some good things happening, if that's okay. All right. Ally, please step up. Love the jersey.
My name is Ally McCormick. This is Chris O'Neill, sort of longtime Freeport resident. I'm from away. I think Chris is a native. I'm not sure many of you were on the council three years ago, or certainly in Maine. Gary, you might have been in Waterville at the time, but I don't think many people know that the only outdoor basketball court that we have in Freeport, located at the middle school, was built primarily with privately raised funds. There were folks who came from other places where they would hang around basketball courts and maybe stay away from doing bad things by hanging around the court, which was a way of life where I come from. And we got together, and Morris Simons had the idea of creating a Freeport Outdoor Recreation Group, Forge. We were very low-tech, cell phones were the size of World War II walkie-talkie, so we didn't have any of the social media advantages that we have today. Bob Smith was the individual, I don't know if anybody knows Bob Smith, but Bob Smith was somebody that if you knew him and you saw him from afar, you would say to yourself, geez, I could be a better person. I could be like Bob Smith, an unbelievable person. He sold his resort in the 2012 spring. He was diagnosed with a brain tumor on Memorial Day weekend and died on Labor Day that same year, the first summer he would have had off. The inspiration to Bob before he had a brain tumor was just him being an inspiration. The inspiration, watching him deal with a brain tumor, and that life was still spectacular, was just an awesome thing for us. So there was a lot of energy around trying to do something for Bob, the court. Chris, will you bring that up to them?
Sure.
And these pictures as well. The court, I'll show you the, there's some pictures that we have. The court is in a significant, a couple more, sorry about that. I'm not going to take too much more time. But anyway, the court's in a significant state of disrepair. The idea was that we could raise maybe $100,000 to refurbish the courts. We started fundraising in March. As of June 18, 2024, we have... $102,000? $103.00. So we have...
Can you say that number again, Ally?
Sure. And it's not Jill Blainers, it's actually dollars, just for those people who are looking at the money exchanges. It's $102,103 in Bath Savings Bank, thanks to Tom Whelan, who is not here. Tom has developed Carpal Tunnel from writing thank you checks. So we're going public, and we're going to be morphing towards a Zephyt nonprofit kind of web thing, so that's a good thing. The real part of this, though, is that this has all been private donations. The real great thing about the old Freeport Outdoor Recreational Group, and the great thing about having old cell phones that don't really work that well, was it was really a community-based thing. Hot dogs, hamburgers, couch it, bingo, fishing derbies, golf, and it really kind of was an unbelievable thing for the community to have. I would dare say in 2024, we're a more Balkanized community. I think we're a more Balkanized country. I think we're a more Balkanized world. I think unfortunately, we have the narcissism of small differences, where we tend to sort of emphasize the little teeny differences that we have to a point of absurdity. And so we have done what we think is the great kind of private fundraising. And now we're here, thanks to John, because we want to go public. And the public is going to involve Facebook, it's going to involve some community events that we have to sort of figure out. You folks are welcome to get involved. The train has a number of open seats on the train, but we're way, way down the track. The school has been very supportive. Gene Scraper has been involved. We've met with the facilities subcommittee. We're meeting with the facilities manager next week. It's hopeful that we're going to do this project as soon as possible. And, and the photos that we have depicting some of the old Freeport Outdoor Recreation Group are before you. And anyway, go with, I'm sorry, I took your time.
No, you did a beautiful job. Abby Latulip, who was a student here in town, who's now an engineer, did some preliminary engineering work on the project. Here's our banker right here, and also one of the fellows involved with the project 33 years ago. It's a wonderful project. We appreciate the opportunity to promote it, and we welcome your involvement.
Fantastic. Thank you. Great to see that spirit coming back.
Excellent. Can I just have the pictures back?
You bet. I think the pictures went that way.
Yeah, I think there's, I got a picture here.
There's some here, too, Ally.
And we don't want any money. We haven't asked for any money.
Right. I pointed that out. Great. Thanks very much. Thank you, counsel, for indulging that. Great. Thank you. Thanks for indulging that agenda change to allow that to happen.
Can I ask this question, John? Is, is that court town property, or RSU 5 property?
I'm pretty sure it's RSU 5 property.
Okay, great.
Okay, back to our agenda. Our next item is item number 165-24. This is the second of our four public hearings. This is take action relative to proposed amendments in Chapter 21 of the Freeport zoning ordinance and to the official zoning map to be consistent with the proposed changes of the floodplain management ordinance that we just passed. So we're going to have a public hearing. We talked about this at our last meeting. And anybody here from the public wishing to testify either for or against, or just to share comments, or ask questions about the changes proposed for Chapter 21 of our zoning ordinance as it relates to the floodplain management? Okay, not seeing any hands. We'll bring the conversation to the council. Any questions about these changes? We had some discussion about it last time. Nick's here to answer questions about the changes. And I will note that the amendment that was handed out briefly before the meeting applies to this action item. So please read the two-page addendum that was circulated by Caroline as part of this context, to just further clarify some of the definitional changes and text edits that we're making in this adoption. Nick, you want to give us a quick summary of?
Sure, yeah. So on all three of the ordinances, we're just updating general definitions throughout to be consistent with the floodplain ordinance. This got sent up to DEP for some preliminary comments. They came back with just a couple changes, to basically take out lake or other water body. Actually, that one might have been me. And same thing, DEP asked us to change from the shore of a lake or other water body to normal high-water line of a water body or upland edge of a wetland, which it doesn't, I don't think it would have mattered, because you had to go with the floodplain one anyways, but DEP asked us to do it, so we made the change. Everybody, Florida lake is not a lake per definition in the law and in our ordinances, just so you know.
What is it called? Just a wetland?
It's a, yeah, it's a freshwater wetland, over 10 acres.
Florida wetland, okay. I'll have to get used to saying that. I go there all the time. Any questions for Nick on the changes to Chapter 21? So the heft of the change here, just to put some context on it, is we're updating our language to comply with the floodplain management and the floodplain ordinance that we just adopted previously in the first public hearing. So this is the first of three ordinance chapters that we have to also amend and adopt, because they reference the floodplain, as well as definitions and language that are stated in the new floodplain ordinance. So that's the action that we're doing tonight with Chapter 21, Chapter 25, and Chapter 65. This action item is 21. So if we have questions about, related to Chapter 21, this would be the time to ask Nick. Again, these are all related to ordinance edits and text changes in the context of the floodplain management ordinance that we just adopted. All right, splendid job explaining. Nick, you've got us all in agreement here. So if we don't have any further questions, then Counsel Fornia, could you please read the beat ordained?
Certainly. Be it ordained that proposed amendments to Chapter 21 of the Freeport zoning ordinance and the official zoning map to be consistent with the proposed changes to the Freeport floodplain management ordinance be adopted.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions on Chapter?
As amended.
As amended? Right, as amended. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah.
As amended.
As amended. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, second, sorry.
Second, been moved and seconded as amended. Any other questions, further comments? All those in favor of adopting the changes to Chapter 21?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seven to zero. Moving right along. So the next chapter in our land use ordinance is Chapter 25, subdivision ordinance to be consistent, again, with the same floodplain management. We have, any changes to ordinance always require a public hearing, so that's why we're going through the mechanical steps of having a public hearing on each one of these. Want to give a chance for anybody that's got particular interest in addressing these issues, please come forward. The public hearing is open. Anyone wish to comment or testify in relation to changes to Chapter 25? Okay, not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing and bring the conversation up to the council. Any counselors have questions for Nick? Again, this is changes similar to what we just passed, only this is in Chapter 25 of the subdivision ordinance, clarifying definitions, making some edits, and aligning all the, all the chapters to be consistent with the floodplain management ordinance.
It's really just a few minor changes, correct?
I don't have those off my fingertips, Nick.
Yeah, it's just a couple, like, just like I said, like the definition, base flood's been changed, like that, where we talked about the 100-year flood and the definitions and stuff. Yeah.
Right. All right, I don't see any more conversation. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the beat ordained of 165-2, I'm sorry, 166-24?
Sure. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 25 town of Freeport subdivision ordinance to be consistent with the proposal changes to the Freeport floodplain management ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any last comments or changes, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As amended?
That one needs an amendment as well?
Sorry, it's shoreline.
My whisper was wrong.
Next one.
Chapter 65.
65.
Yeah, 65.
We'll take note that 65 will need a as amendment. All right, our next public hearing is item number 167-24, again, in relative to proposed amendments, this time to Chapter 65, which is our shoreline zoning ordinance chapter, necessary to be consistent with the proposed changes in the floodplain management ordinance. Again, sorry for the clumsy mechanical steps here, but our charter requires that any changes to our ordinance have a public hearing individually, which is why we're going through this sequence. So, public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to comment on changes to Chapter 65, the shoreline zone? Again, this is to make edits for consistency with the floodplain management ordinance. for consistency with the floodplain management ordinance. All right, not seeing any hands. Nick, is there anything other than?
Yeah, there's just one more change that it's not with the floodplain management ordinance, but it does deal with flood zones. It's actually in state law, so we can enforce it now, but we thought it was clear to get it into the shoreline zoning, which is under Section 202(c)(1)CII, which basically, if you have a non-conforming structure that's in the flood zone and you can't move it back, therefore, you can't raise it to get it out of the flood zone because it was going to violate the height standards. This now allows you, if you, the greatest practical center, wherever it is, you can raise it there to three feet above the base flood elevation in order to get it out. So you can violate the height restrictions of the shoreline zone to get it out of the flood zone. So that's what that changes.
It's on page 22, by the way, of the ordinance handout that was included in our agenda package. Is that the substance of changes in?
Yeah, everything else is basically the base flood changes back and forth, the dates that are of the maps and things like that.
All right, any other questions? That seems to be the primary change related to height limitations on structures. All right, Joanna, you want to please read item number 167-24, the beat ordained?
Be it ordained that proposed amendments to Chapter 65 town of Freeport shoreline zoning ordinance necessary to be consistent with the proposed changes to the Freeport floodplain management ordinance be adopted.
Second.
As amended.
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, Nick.
One question I do have, did we, I didn't hear it in one of the motions, but did we adopt, did we amend the zoning map to have these changes? Okay. Just want to make sure that got changed. Thank you.
All right, so we just covered all of our public hearings for this evening related to the exciting text changes in our zoning, sorry, in our floodplain management ordinance. Our next item is item number 168-24, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss amendments to the Chapter 21 zoning ordinance as it relates to zoning district boundaries. We're just setting this public hearing. We're not going to be taking any testimony this evening. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered for 168-24?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for July 2nd, 2024, at the council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss amendments to Chapter 21 Freeport zoning ordinance, Section 201, general restrictions regarding lots transected by two or more zoning district boundaries.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Cecilia, you want to give us a little context on what we're going to hear about on July 2nd?
Sure. Hold on. I'm not going to be here on July 2nd, so I can give you some more context today.
Great.
Since I won't be here. So I do have a handout of the zoning map. I don't know if you guys have it. You have it? Okay, excellent. I have another handout, just in case, in case, and we don't have to, you want to walk through an example? There are copies here if anyone wants some. Okay, so the town council has given the planning board direction to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance to ease some development restrictions that we have on lots that are transected by zoning district boundaries. The planning board then held a discussion on May 1st and instructed staff to bring forward amendments that would apply only to the lots that are intersected by the resource protection two district. And then, we had public hearing on June 5th, and they voted to recommend the amendments that you have before you. Now, the reason why we're asking you to look at the zoning map is that we want to give you some context why we focused on the RP2 district. And if you look on the RP2 district, that very dark green, the darker of the green, that's a resource protection two, and it's not in a shape that follows property boundaries. It exists and is very old. We have a long history with the resource protection districts, and they were created to protect sensitive areas, and in this case, or groundwater or aquifer that feeds through our public drinking supply. So that's, because of that, because it doesn't follow property lines, there's so many people that find themselves in a situation where part of their property is in those two districts. Often, the most common scenario is a resource protection two district and the rural residential one district. And it makes it hard for them to split up their lots because then they have to meet the area requirements for both districts. So that's why we decided to bring forward those amendments so that you, you know, to include the RP2 and that exemption under Section 201-h. We already allowed that exemption for the resource protection one district, so we're just adding the resource protection two districts to that. And if that's confusing, I can give you, we can walk through an example of.
So, in particular, I think what we were running into were some properties that you could be fully, your parcel could fully be within the RP2 district, and you would need to have 2.5 acres of land and 50 feet of frontage, road frontage. But if you simply had a little bit of the RP2 district in your property, on your property, you had to find 2.5 acres of RP2 and 50 feet of road frontage, as well as 2.5 acres in the other. I mean, it just, it did not make any sense.
Yeah, and it does. Sorry, go ahead.
So, this step is simply to bring some parity, and the other piece is that RP1 is more restrictive and already allows for this exemption. So you're simply bringing parity within the ordinance to resource protection.
Yeah. And in that case, you know, both districts, the rural protection, I mean, sorry, rural residential one district and the rural research protection two, sorry, too many Rs, resource protection two districts, they both require two and a half acres per unit. So, you know, by saying, oh, you might have like three acres here, but you have this little chunk that's on the resource protection two, and therefore, you can't meet the requirement, it's kind of tough, considering that if you were on the resource protection one district, which is even more stringent, it would be okay. So.
What if your lot's not two and a half acres, smaller?
Then I guess you wouldn't meet the requirements of both zoning districts.
All right, so we're setting this public hearing for July 2nd. I encourage you, if you have more questions or details, like I do, that we communicate with the planning staff between now and the public hearing, so we can get those out on the table during our next meeting on July 2nd. This is literally way down the weed, so it's important to get it right. But I think that we've just heard that really what we're trying to do is to simplify and bring alignment between these two resource protection areas, so that some property owners are not treated differently than others, just because of where they are in the RP1 or the RP2. All right, so we've got the item to set the public hearing. We have to read it in, Counselor.
I've already read it.
Oh, we already read it. Yep, it's already read it. So, no further questions, and we'll vote on setting this public hearing for July 2nd for item number 168-24. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Smith, could you please read number 169-24? This is our next public hearing that we're setting for July 2nd.
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for July 2nd, 2024, at the council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss the repeal of Chapter 45, newspaper vending devices on public streets and sidewalks of the Freeport Code of Ordinances.
Second.
All right, we know that newspapers in handheld version are in declining popularity, but can you please give us a little context on this, Sophie?
So, I will give you a little context. I will tell you that Chris Wolf, this is her suggestion, the ordinance committee jumped on very quickly to agree. She reports that in the nine years that she's been with the town, there hasn't been one permit needed or any issue. So, in general, the current ordinance goes into great detail, long detail, about how to regulate the placement and the use of sidewalk vending machines, particularly newspaper magazines. So, given that one of the things we've heard was, do we need all of our ordinances? Chris has been on a mission to draft ones, to identify ones for the ordinance committee that might be outdated or obsolete. She identified this one, as I said, we haven't used it in at least nine years. But when we come back on July 2nd, she will be recovered from her medical procedure and will be able to give you great detail about the ordinance.
Okay, so we're just setting that. Daryl?
The only question I have, I agree with newspapers, if someone wanted to put out an advertisement, sometimes I've gone to other communities where they advertise, could be real estate, could be place seat or whatever, will that be prohibited if we do this? And that can be answered at the next meeting. That's the only question I would have.
Yeah, so I think what I would say, if they're advertising, it's probably a sign, so it would have to fit within the sign ordinance. And we also have some laws that are on the books now that probably weren't on the books when this was adopted, around the space on a sidewalk that we have to maintain.
Any other comments or questions? We'll go ahead and set this public hearing.
I'll just make the comment that the map that is included in this from 30 years ago includes streets that don't exist anymore, or are not named that anymore. So, this is long overdue to be revised.
Great. Yeah, repealing it. All right, all those in favor of setting the public hearing on July 2nd?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next item is number 170-24. This is for special amusement permit renewal for Buck's Naked Barbecue. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the beat ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for July 2nd, 2024, at the council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss a special amusement permit renewal for Buck's Naked Barbecue.
Second.
These are relatively routine, but our current procedure requires a public hearing on the renewal of special amusement, which is something we've had conversations about. But the special amusement permit is where there is music and alcohol in the same venue on the same time. That's what triggers the special amusement, so that's why we're having a public hearing on it. Anyway, all those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's set. Moving right along to the next page. Our next item is 171-24, which is related to amending the town fee schedule. We've been working for quite a while now to actually get all fees referenced in various ordinances and other places in our town documents onto a single page, so that all the fee schedule, everything from license renewals to permit applications and everything in between, are on a fee schedule, so that when we change fees, we're just mending and changing the fee schedule and not having to open up and unravel all of the ordinance language to go from $20 to $25, or whatever the edit might be. So, we are taking that action this evening to modify the town fee schedule. And since I'm on the line next, I'll read the be it ordered that the town fee schedule be amended as proposed.
Second.
Take a second on that. All right, Nick, can you outline which fees we're adjusting here?
Yeah, sure. So the first one was flood development hazard fee. That's why this all triggered it. So we've been charging $55 for those, which is the minimum permit fee for everything. Which, then we added shoreline zoning permits issued by my office, which are small projects that don't have to go to the project review board, and it's not, it might not be a building permit, but you need a shoreline zoning permit for it. So we're just making it consistent with all those, the same fees. We're moving on the, the council had two separate fee schedules, so like, the second one was codes and planning. We basically are moving all of those over to the first fee schedule, because it used to say see separate list, and it was kind of confusing to everybody, so we're trying to make it into one document. So we're basically taking those fees and we're just clarifying some of them. Basically, I proposed upping the additions from 200 square feet to 700 square feet to keep it at $55, which is consistent with the next one down, which is, it said sheds, barns, garages, porches, miscellaneous items under 700 square feet. It was like, kind of going back and forth, so I kind of just cleaned it up to try to make it, they're all the same. Make sure that that was for residential, just the other changes, we've been kind of doing it already, but it was just kind of putting it in the ordinance, like heat pumps, PV arrays for residential, and other similar, which could be like a car charger, it could be simple things like that, the small project, that's just the minimum fee for electrical. Commercial, changing it to five cents per square foot for solar. It's currently like 10 cents, which I think is high. We don't do a lot of commercials. I proposed to bring it down to try to cover what cost, what we would have out of my office for that. Made a small change to plumbing, to basically just say that the $15 surcharge is actually DEP surcharge, so everybody's aware that that's what that is. We didn't change anything with, anything with building permits or impact fees. That was a discussion, if we want to change those for another day, we just wanted to get these other minor changes in. And throughout, in a bunch of different places, it calls for fines, a fine for a violation of this ordinance, or a fine for violation of this section. Basically, I just struck it out in all different sections and just said see state law, because that's where the fines, that's where you're allowed to do it, which is $100 to $5,000 per day per violation, which technically fines are assessed by the court, not by the town. The only time we do anything like that is through a consent agreement, which you would follow the state law anyways. And other than that, we added, I increased the Board of Appeals application process currently, right now. It doesn't cover the town's cost of hiring, sharing for the minutes, doesn't cost for the notifications in the paper, and all the butters fees and the packets to go out to the board members. So basically, we just increased it. It looks like it's a little bit, but it's really basically going to be, the town's going to be breaking even. We're not, the town's not going to get any money on it, but currently, we're losing money on it. And that's basically it.
Questions for Nick on the amendments and adjustments to the fee schedule? Eric?
I just have what is perhaps a silly question, but I'm looking at the printing fees, and I happen to have the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance in front of me. And the zoning ordinance fee for printing is $14, and that's for 52 pages. And the subdivision ordinance is $11 for 82 pages, 89 pages?
Yeah.
Was that?
We were going to get into, look into those.
Okay.
I think we're probably going to propose deleting them eventually, because we don't really print them out for anybody. Everybody just gets them. But when that was put in, the zoning ordinance was like 300 pages long back, and then we took shoreline zoning out, we took a lot of other stuff out. But there'll probably be some changes to take a lot of those old fees out of there, because we don't really do it.
Okay, that's helpful.
Eric, I just want to add, what Nick's saying is right, we need to look at them, but you only got 52 of 252 pages tonight?
There you go.
Because you got an abbreviated version.
So I can't sell this on the street for $14?
No, you'll have to mark it down.
All right, any other questions on the amendments to the fee schedule, and the adoption of the fee schedule? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the fee schedule as amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seven to zero. Our next item is item number 172-24, to consider action relative to adopting a revised social media policy. Matt, we're back down to you. Please read the beat ordered.
Sure. Be it ordered that a revised social media policy be adopted as presented.
Seconded.
All right, Sophie, you want to give us a little context on this?
So, this is actually administrative policy, so it's an internal policy. The element that is external would be public comment and interaction with social media, which, when this came to
which when this came to the ordinance committee, there were, there was some conversation about the fact that we really don't use social media to go back and forth with people. That's not the intent. We also, so this is to define for staff what we'll use for social media, how you establish an account that's for the town, how you can appropriately post to that account, who has the authority to do that. And it also does talk a little bit about staff free speech rights. So, what I have done is this was reviewed by the town's personnel attorney a while ago. And we've brought it up. It went through review. And what I've been told is while I can adopt many of the administrative policies, this one in particular would make more sense if it had the council's approval as well.
And it's already been through the ordinance committee?
It went through ordinance and it...
What was sort of the reason to develop this? Was there an incident or concern, or is it just good practice?
So, it's good practice. And I went through the heartache of doing it in a previous community. And it seemed like a good idea. We're also with our new website. We're going to be launching the next element as a more interactive social media. The town of Freeport has done a remarkable job of maintaining consistent practices over time. But I'm finding that we're pretty weak on written policies. So, trying to kind of pick away at it. And this seemed like a, like a good time to look at this.
Well, I appreciate being proactive rather than reactive. Thank you.
Is social media going to be a key component of our new communications staff person?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping that even before we get there, as soon as your town manager can get unblocked from Facebook, she will, she will try to do a little bit more activity in that regard.
All right, social media policy's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor of adopting the policy?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next item is item number 173-24, to consider action relative to adopting the Complete Streets policy, which is reflection of the fabulous work from the Complete Streets Committee.
Hi, I'm Liz. I'm the chair of the Complete Streets Committee. And we've recently updated our policy. It was last approved in 2020. So, we decided we go, we decided we go through it again. I don't, I'm not thinking you want me to go through each piece. And I think you should have an updated copy. And we highlighted what we changed. But I mean, essentially, we just took out any, any specific reference to the town engineer. And then we also just updated our multimodal path definition to include electric vehicles. And then that's pretty much all we did. Do you have any questions?
Daryl?
You've heard my pet peeve, brick sidewalks. And I'm looking, you know, hopefully that when you look at that, that we can address some of those areas. Because I know some of the requests went through Complete Streets. And in particular, we have some areas in town that are on hills, very icy. It costs way too much money to maintain them to try to keep them ice free during the winter. People have fallen to stuff. So, that's something I hope when we go down the road, Complete Streets can fast forward that because it'll have some significant savings in the budget.
So, we kind of bypassed that a little bit. This policy is just sort of a high level view. I think some of the specifics about which, you know, which sidewalks are going to be brick or not, that's more handled by whatever the maintenance schedule is that the city keeps? I don't know if you want to say more about that, Sophie?
So, I do, because we have Earl here. So, one of the things that Earl and I are trying to do, because we are now the staff to Complete Streets, which has been a wonderful shift for us. We're learning a lot. But Earl and I are working on a draft policy that once his construction season is finishing up, we'll be able to return our attention to. That policy, once we have a draft, we'll take it to Complete Streets to get their input on. And then that will come back to the council as direction for operation. Did I do all right, Earl? Do you want to add?
The only thing I'd like to add, note that some of our sidewalks, we have concerns because they're steep and they're all brick. One of them that we're, first one that we're working on is the Bartow Building. We're going to put that back brick. As soon as I can get my brick guy here, my sidewalk guy, we anticipate on School Street and getting that hill and that intersection changed over from brick to asphalt down to Middle Street. So, they're in there. It's just going to take time to get this stuff scheduled and do it again.
Thanks, Earl.
So, any questions?
All right, thanks, Liz. Oh, yeah.
20 miles per hour is that sort of best practice?
Mm-hmm.
Curious if...
Yeah, I think that was lifted right off the state website.
All right, so let's read the item to get it introduced. Item number 173-24, Counselor Fornier, I think. So, we have to you?
Certainly, be it ordered that the Complete Streets policy be adopted as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's?
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Item number 174-24, I've been advised is going to be tabled this evening. We're not taking this up tonight. So, we'll move on to item number 175-24, which is to consider action relative to accepting certain state funds for FY '25 budget. And this starts a number of budget item action, agenda items for the balance of our action item agenda. So, is there a particular commentary that you'd like? Or are we just going to go through them, Sophie, for adopting?
I, I think...
The third-party funds?
I think staff has put a lot of commentary into the process. But if people have questions, I, I know Jessica's here and most definitely prepared. But I know that when we come to 77-24, there are some changes in there and some questions that were outstanding from council that I do think we want to stop and have some discussion on.
All right, so we're not going to read all 10 of these items on here, but they're printed in, in the agenda. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered with a as described for the individual line items?
Sure. Be it ordered that the following categories for state funds be accepted for fiscal year 2025 as designated in the agenda.
Second.
All right, we've moved and seconded. Jessica, did you want to add anything, anything peculiar out of these? These look pretty ordinary.
These are your standard revenue acceptance lines. Yep.
The only thing I would add is if we have any additional revenues, we would come right to you so you could accept them. We won't reject any.
Yep.
Sure.
All others not identified or, yeah, discussed. So, any questions for Jessica about any of these line items? We'll be getting to the full budget here shortly. All right, seeing no further questions, it's been moved and seconded. Item number 175-24, to accept state funds for fiscal year 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, our next budget item is 176-24, to consider action relative to the operating budget for Winslow Park for our next fiscal year. Counsel Brenner, can you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that $422,420 be approved for the Winslow Park budget from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025? And $28,400 be approved for the Harp Cottage budget from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025?
Second. So, for members of the public, the Winslow Park Commission really manages and operates Winslow Park as a town asset, relatively independent of town, downtown government. It's an enterprise function of town government. So, it's town property legally. And the council appoints members to that, that Winslow Park Commission. But they really govern themselves. They manage their own budget. They raise their own funds. They set their own fees. And they keep up with all of the maintenance and activities on that particular wonderful town asset. However, while it is a town enterprise, it is still town government money, which is why we're voting on it this evening. But this, these numbers in this budget were presented and discussed and approved by the Winslow Park Commission before any action taken by us. Any questions for staff on item number 176-24, Winslow Park budget? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, budget passes. Way to go, Neil. All right, our next item is the fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the town of Freeport. There are a whole bunch of departments here and as well as both sides of the budget for revenues and expenditures. Lots of detail listed in the budget. We're not going to read it all as a part of the order. But Counselor Smith, could you please introduce the item number 177-24?
Be it ordered that the following appropriations, as listed in the town council agenda, be made to the several departments for purposes named and that the following revenues, as listed, estimated be adopted and that the following amounts be raised by taxation, said action for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30, 2025 municipal budget.
Second. All right, so this is the big gorilla in the room. This is the municipal budget. This is the part of your tax bill as taxpayers that the town has influence and control over. And we do our best to manage that, relying on expert staff and the guidance and leadership of our finance director, who's provided excellent fiscal management of the town's budget since as long as I can remember. So, we've been talking about the budget for quite a while. Jessica, maybe if there's any last-minute adjustments that have been made in the past couple of weeks. I know they're very minor, but still worth mentioning since people may have had a number in their head from the last time we talked about the budget.
Sure, so one adjustment that is not reflected that came up after the agenda was submitted was the request for an additional $3,000 for the Conservation Commission to perform mowing duties at the Parks and Recs, I'll call it, I guess. So, that changes the unclassified, if it's to be adopted by council, changes the unclassified line to $3,401,050, making the total appropriations $16,091,058. And moving down to the amount to be raised by taxation would be $9,184,333. And the total revenues, again, would be $16,091,058. The, so that's kind of a new one that's come in that would need to go through your amendments, motions, and adoptions. But to kind of revert back to what you probably actually meant and asked me, what is reflected in the numbers before you is the inclusion of $750 for Oasis Free Clinic to match what their request was. An additional $50 to increase for the Snowmobile Club to be what their request came in at. The Southern Maine Agency on Aging asked to have their appropriation to be $1,000. It includes $1,500 for the farmer's market. It includes $100,000 for the senior property tax relief program. It includes the removal of $20,000 from the Freeport Community Service General Assistance Contract. And it includes $110,700 for a general assistance director, which includes their wages and benefits for that program.
So, aside from the $3,000 adjustment, all of that you just said is in these numbers?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to state, we've been talking about it for a while, the senior property tax circuit breaker, for lack of a better term, something that we debated on a lot. And I feel really good that we're able to include that in our town budget to be able to offer some tax stabilization for senior homeowners who meet the income qualification, as well as renters meet the income qualification to get some relief from that budget item. We are all collectively concerned about the older folks in our community don't have a lot of resources and don't have a lot of backup. And property taxes, because of rising values, continue to go up. And those homeowners and residents may not have the resources to be able to meet that rising demand. This budget item discussed and put in place by this council is a notch against that unpredictability. And let's see what the fund actually gets used for in the next year. We're hoping to have some more communication about that to our general residents. And thanks to outlets like Traumler's, to be able to spread the word on that. So, we'll be putting that on our town website as well as our public safety sign, hopefully out front, so that folks can learn about that program. So, we've had a lot of discussion. At the last budget workshop, we went down those line items that Jessica just recited to include or not include where things were. And it also includes the adjustment that we have for covering the GA position, which we're now going to have to put in place for fiscal year '25. And I know we had some discussion about other line items in, in that schedule of outside agencies. Do we have any other questions or comments from folks before we move forward with any action? Daryl?
The only question I had was the $20,000 coming out of Freeport Community Services, since we had to have a significant increase in budgets of that. I was hoping for a little more money to offset the cost to our taxpayers.
Right.
And I, I still would like to see that. I don't think that is enough to help, you know, defer the cost of what I have to pick up.
So, with that in mind, we anticipated some more conversation about that. We have members of FCS leadership here to be able to answer some questions about what those funds were doing, had been doing. And so, maybe Sarah, if you could just come forward and share a little bit about that and answer some questions.
While we're waiting for Sarah to step up, the $20,000, is that, that's for the general assistance? Is that also including the other funding that we were discussing, or?
No, the $20,000 that Jessica referenced just a few minutes ago, that is taking the contract. We will owe them for July and August at $2,000 a year. We had budgeted $24,000. I think the questions came in where we actually have funding for FCS matter throughout the budget. Do you want me to recapitulate that?
No, I just wanted to clarify that one particular line. So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. I've got some other board members here tonight, too. If we have any additional questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer them. First, would love to start off with an apology for the way the news was delivered. That was something that was unintended and short-sighted on our part. And we greatly apologize. We really value our relationship with the town and everything that we've done for many years, for 50 years, because you guys have been a partner from the beginning, the town has. And certainly, our intent was not to, to have it be so negatively received. Certainly, we recognize that there's a lot to consider with this transition. Certainly, we recognize that there's a lot to consider with this transition and with the change at our organization, but we did have to make the decision in order to continue to offer the great resources that we're offering our community. We were really stretching our staff very thin. A lot of what is involved within GA is within our mission, and we're happy to fulfill those needs. I think we'll be the number one partner, hopefully with the new general assistance administrator, will be the key resource for them to utilize. But we certainly recognize that there definitely was a negative reaction, and that certainly was not intended.
All right, so we had some conversation about this particular budget item, as well as the overall relationship at our last budget workshop. And so we invited Sarah and the board members to come to answer any questions. Counselors have questions or comments for Sarah.
So I think, I think the question on the table was, there's additional funding that the town provides.
Correct.
To FCS, and we'd like to get a summary of the impact to know whether or not that's on the table for us to reallocate to the GA position that we have to fund for this upcoming year, or if not. And I think as much detail as you can give us on what impacts that may or may not have if we remove the funding. And Sophie, do you want to remind us what the dollar amount we're looking at is, or Jessica potentially?
I guess $21,000.
It's $21,000 that equates to .7 cents on the mil rate.
So that .7 cents is, you know, it's hard to anticipate exactly what next year we'll bring. Obviously, we're asking for these funds for fiscal year 25. I can let you know for fiscal year 24, these funds have been really helpful as we're looking at the summer camp scholarships. That's been an area where we've had a wonderful demand. We're definitely rebounding from COVID times, and it's really nice to see kids getting out and enjoying summer camp. So that's been really instrumental in making sure that we don't have to say no to a kiddo. Also, the increase in food pantry visits has been really high as well this year. I think we all can relate to the strain that we experience when we're at the grocery store. So being able to shop when we need to from Good Shepherd, make up those differences where we're finding things to be a little soft, that's what the operating has really been key for. It allows us to pivot every year as needed. You know, we've had the new manor situation in the past, we've had other unique scenarios that have risen, and having that general operating, the flexibility is really huge to just make sure that we can meet the needs of everybody. I think one of the key components of FCS, I think you guys probably know this quite well, but one of the key components of the resources and what we provide the community is a very low barrier program, a real low barrier approach to how we serve folks. We have people from all walks of life within the community, we have folks from every employer within the community that unfortunately do find times when they need to come in and access our resources. And so the funding certainly is critical in making sure that, you know, when the mother who is looking to send their kiddo to surf camp or, you know, photography camp, has that opportunity to do that and then grow that amazing passion and skill in their future. So, you know, certainly concrete right now, it addresses immediate needs, but it also sets folks up for future success in many ways, too.
So if, if that does go away, what are you going to do to, are you going to find alternative funding sources? Will you have to reduce services? I mean, what's the concrete impact of, of our decision tonight?
We would have to find alternative resources. We are not looking to reduce what we're providing the community, the demand is up, we're here to meet it. You know, we are pretty kept within our actual physical building as to, you know, expanding the thrift shop, we don't have that opportunity, we hope down the road we can look at that, but we are very limited. Our thrift shop is a really great source of income for us, as well as community support, so we would have to, we would have to get creative.
I think in our last workshop, Sarah, we were able to articulate specific lines and support, including significant contributions that the council made last year.
Yes.
And I think we had pretty good consensus that the $5,000 that's in the current budget to support summer camp for youth was not on the table.
Yeah.
So that was going to continue. I just want to make that clear, that the council feels very strongly about supporting that, it's a great program.
It's huge, yeah.
We're in a position where we have to make a decision about, the town is required to provide GA services, as you well know.
Right.
And so we have to be able to hire a position, hire a person to do that, we don't have a lot of time to plan for it. It has to be in place, you know, in just a matter of 60 days here when our contract terminates. So we have to be able to do that, and that means expending an FTE position in the town budget, which we're not planning, we're not planning on.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is trying to find a balance for that new additional FTE to, to be able to meet a state requirement demand to provide GA services.
For sure. And I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, in all honesty, I was thrilled to see that you guys were proposing a full-time position. I think that that's necessary for this job. It's, it's, you know, what we were experiencing was a really incredible demand. Eight to 10 families a month doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot of work. Marie's here, she's been doing, I won't make you speak, she's been doing the general assistance along with age-friendly for a year now, and the demand is significant for every family and working through that. So I think a full-time is a really great approach. I hope they have a little extra time to do some other things, but I would definitely wanted to acknowledge that and also to acknowledge, I know that obviously with our contract, it was a 90-day notice. We indicated in the notice and certainly in follow-up communications, we are not looking at that 90 days and then running. We are part of this process long-term, but certainly beyond the town taking it back over, will be engaged and involved in that work. But we're also, again, not looking at the 90 days and saying, if you haven't found somebody by then, that's it. We are not going to, we don't want to see any interruption in the services for our community, and that's our number one priority, and also supporting the town in this transition as well.
I'm not surprised to hear you say that. We're, we're providing direction to the manager to go ahead and start action on that, and we may or may not be able to meet that timeframe.
Right.
And so we may need to actually rely on that in order to have a continuity of those services.
Yeah.
But we also, as the stewards of the public money, we have to make our decisions based on the best interest of, of all the taxpayers in, in the community, so.
Absolutely.
Eric.
Sarah, could you provide just a little bit of background, not, not a comprehensive history.
Not an eight-page one?
An overview of when FCS became the general assistance contractor, how long that's been, and just a little bit of the background for why you and your board made the decision that you needed to end that, that agreement.
For sure. Thank you for that question. So it was about three years ago when Joanna Hanselman, the previous general assistance administrator, when she retired, Peter approached FCS, I'm sure with guidance as well, to see if this was something that we thought we could incorporate into our programs at the, at the community center. I have done general assistance before, so it seemed like an easy fit. I could see how this could be our kindness kind of wrapping around general assistance where folks could come in. We know the program is very rigid. It's, it's pretty dehumanizing, frankly, to go through the process of applying for GA. So with all of our resources, we were really hoping to have kind of that full wraparound services. If someone got a no, we have other stuff. And so in the three years, shortly after we took it on, we had about 80 new manor families arrive in Freeport. One of those, one of those hotels was paid for, paid for by another municipality's general assistance, but the other was paid for with some other kind of emergency rental assistance type funds. But they were coming to Freeport GA for food, non-food, and other necessities, diapers, that sort of thing. So we quickly saw what we were anticipating, about one to two households turn into 40. And Mike Tausick at the time was our director of programs, he did a great job of managing that until folks transitioned out. And kind of since then, I think certainly relative to the housing situation that we are all very aware of, numbers have remained pretty high. We are seeing folks that aren't residents of Freeport, and those situations do tend to take the most time just because of the simple lack of true resources or family community. And so that's, that's a big piece of what prompted us to have that reflection on how much time we're spending, how it's pushing the capacity of the organization to continue to offer it, and what we're having to sacrifice in turn in order to try and creatively address the GA demands and needs. And we tried a lot of creative approaches over those three years. It wasn't a decision that we came to lightly.
Thanks, Sarah. Dan.
First, thank you. Counselor Brnoy and I spent an hour or so with you in your board chair going through some of this in detail. It was a very helpful conversation for me. I think my question is probably more for Sophie, and it's a bit hypothetical, but I think it, it makes sense. If we were to use the $21,000 to help fund this new position that we have to absorb, and hypothetically, it took an extra few months to find that person. So in other words, we don't find them by the end of August, but sometime later in the fall. We're currently underpaying, but we're paying $2,000 a month to FCS to administer GA. When we take it on and increase it to a full-time position, it'll be about $10,000 a month, give or take. So every month we don't find someone, we save $8,000. So not, I don't want to take advantage of FCS, but if it did take a little bit longer and we're budgeting 10 months' worth of that person, we only have to pay eight months' worth of that person, we're going to have some extra money floating around. Could we then come back to you and say, oh, we have $16,000 that we might want to use to replenish the $21,000 we took away?
Council can do what it wants, when it wants, but that seems like a reasonable course. I, of that, you know, net, I don't know how long it will take me to get someone in, but that would maybe solve both issues with the idea, I think there are other things that we might want to come back to at the end of the, like mid-year or, or later.
And I'm not saying to slow down that process and intentionally delay that, but I'm just sort of saying if that were to happen. Good, thanks.
Darrell.
FCS does a great job in town, and I fully support you. Here's my frustration. I have had numerous calls that people are scared that we're not going to approve the tax stabilization fund, because they're not going to be saving the homes.
Yeah.
They're going to lose their homes, and they're going to go out.
Agreed.
And those homes are going to be sold for big money, because somebody's going to come in, and that's what we're currently doing in the real estate market in this town, and will make it very difficult for people on fixed incomes. I find it ironic, we sit here and we want to pass the stabilization, which I fully support, we need to do that, but we can't say no to anything else. And we made discussions and, and the board made a decision, I think every place we can have savings, that will help those poor people that are going to be forced out of their homes, hopefully not, but are very scared of that. And, and, and it's a tough job up here, because we all have the special interests that come in, but we had, you know, $20,000 here, we had this money here, whatever, and then pretty soon we're looking at, I don't know what our rate this year we're looking at, but it's significant. So sometimes we have to say no. We don't have the appetite.
Right.
I do. So, and, and I'm not here saying that I don't support that, but, but we have a bigger problem here. And, and it's not only due to our spending here, our economy, and you said it, people that go out to try to buy groceries, try to buy, we're in tough, tough, tough shape on, on people on fixed income, and I'll say it getting much better, unfortunately.
I agree.
Chip?
So this is not necessarily directed at you, but I'd like to make a recommendation. Did you find, did you do any research on what I asked you last week?
Did I send you the email on?
Oh, you did? I didn't have, I haven't had a chance to look at my email, so.
But I just wanted to make, I didn't mean that to be serious.
I know, I know.
I just wanted to make sure about looking at fund balance.
Yes.
Yes, there's, I sent you a bunch of research.
Okay, and was it?
It says we already, it's doable.
Okay.
But it would need some discussion with council.
Yes, I do, so that's why, yeah, so that's why I want to bring it up. One of the issues I have is that we are raising taxes to give money away to organizations that, although are valid and great, and I have nothing against them, but it is a charitable organization, and we're raising taxes to give them money. I don't like doing that, because we have people that are in their houses that are trying to stay there, we have the tax stabilization, which I also fully support, but then we're saying, hey, we're going to take some of that money and give it to this group, and they can't afford to do that. So when, at the end of the year, when everything's paid, and we know what we have for excess capital, and we put money into the capital budget, and we put, I would recommend that we take that money instead of just putting it all into the capital budget, we put 85% of it into the capital budget, we put 10% into tax stabilization, and 5% up to $20,000 that we can give away, this is just me talking, we can talk about this, that we can use to give to these organizations. But what that does is take it out of this process and dickering and all that over, do we going to raise taxes? Because they always go up, they never come down, and it is only seven cents per whatever, or it's a penny here, or it's eight cents there, or that we change the way we do this to that process. So that way, we're not raising taxes to give money away, it's money we, we raise, we did better in the revenue instead of trying to bring it in. That's, that's what I recommend. I know we can't do it with this particular budget, but.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to change that process right now, but certainly worth having a.
No, but I think we should, and it'll make it easier to swallow, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. I don't have any, I guess, immediate reactions to that, other than I, I want to continue the conversation, Chip, and have a look at it. Whether or not the town is supporting an organization, a charitable organization in the community, or providing a tax stabilization, it's still a relief for some that everybody has to pay the burden on. So that they're, they're not as dissimilar as, as maybe.
That's true, but the taxpayer that we're giving money to has been paying taxes for at least 10 years, and there are the requirements, but, but they have been paying these taxes, and now we get to give back to those people. So that's, that's a big difference, I see.
But I also don't think you can, you can say that the folks that are benefiting from FCF services aren't paying taxes and aren't residents of our town and being supported. I mean, at the end of the day, I think we can look at it this way, that we're making decisions to support our community and their multiple needs across every spectrum that we have in town, and there may be things that you agree with and you don't, but we're not making decisions to just send money elsewhere that doesn't, that isn't rooted in supporting the residents of our town. And I think that's a really important thing for everyone to agree on, because we're not just buying Yarmouth a fire truck or doing things like that. So I, I just think it's an important point.
I didn't mean it to come out that way. I mean, you're right, they're all, they're all organizations that are in some way supporting the town, but it's not a charter that we have to do that. And, and I agree with it somewhat, it's just we're raising taxes to do that, and I don't, that's the problem.
I also just want to add that when I was talking to Sarah previously when we met, you know, I think there's an important distinction of the people who are using the services that are being provided by FCS are, are we, it's us, it's not them versus.
I'm not saying that.
So it could be some, I might need to go to the food pantry sometime, I don't know, right? Like, it's a resource for anybody at any time, regardless of, of your income. And we're also in a time in our economy where you're taking home six figures, and sometimes it's not enough right now, if you have a family. So, yeah, just wanted to make sure we're aware that there's, this is a population-wide problem, not a subpopulation.
Eric.
I just want to bring a bit of a different perspective to the conversation around GA and Freeport Community Services, because what I'm hearing in terms of the history, which obviously predates my time on the council, is that we all know that this is a service that we are obligated to provide. We used to have it in-house. Several years ago, we thought, I think, that the hope for the town, and I remember when this was announced, and I was very hopeful about it, for exactly the reason you mentioned, Sarah, which is to have that, all of the resources under one roof and, and find a path to get people what they need. But that hasn't worked out, which I understand. And the way I read this, the town of Freeport got an extraordinary bargain for three years by, by outsourcing these services, where we were paying $2,000 a month for something that if we were doing it ourselves, would have cost us a lot more. if we were doing it ourselves would have cost us a lot more over the last three years. And I'm not prepared to say to FCS, what we have given you in operating funds in addition to the money for general assistance, we're now going to take back because we saved a lot of money at your expense for the last three years, and now we have to suddenly take that back. This is a town function that we need to take, and yes, it is going to require us to raise taxes, but that is an obligation of the town to do. I do think that one of the things this conversation has brought up is the fact that we also, years ago, were very, perhaps exuberantly supportive of the building of the community center. And we have a long-term lease with you at FCS, at the community center for space, and that long-term lease is costing us more and more each year.
Yeah.
And I think that is raising some concerns, and I think that's a separate conversation, but there are so many things within the relationship between FCS because we are so intertwined between the town and FCS that I think it's taken us a lot to try to sort all of that out.
True.
So some of the things that we will continue to pay FCS for are contractually obligated that go far beyond GA. So there is significant tax funding that is going to FCS for building costs, for all kinds of things. But this particular question about the operations donation, I think, is where we've been circling around. But I understand that the process in the last couple of months has been difficult, I think, for you and your board, as well as for us, in terms of scrambling to address this need. But I am not sure that it's something we should be terribly surprised by, given how little we were paying to meet something in the budget that we know really costs more than what we were paying.
Can I just clarify your point, Dan? Can you explain again, so you're proposing that we remove the funding?
It's not in this number that's on the page.
No, it is.
Oh, it is? Oh, it is? Okay, sorry.
So you're proposing that that gets removed, and we fully allocate for the new position, and then any cost savings from the hiring process of that position could get redirected back to FCS if we decided to, right?
It was a hypothetical. I wasn't proposing it, but yes, essentially, the mechanics are exactly how you described it, yeah. My only caution is that we may decide that now, in December, we may or may not have a new council, or we may or may not change our minds and say, yeah, well, we said we might do this, but really now we need to replace something else that costs $16,000 and do that. That's a potential.
Like the hoist at the wharf, for instance.
Yeah, right, right. Yep.
Are there any other ARPA funds remaining? I know we're going through the exercise of figuring out what's left.
Jessica, Sophie and I just went through that today. It's not looking as fun as I wanted it to look. It's probably 30 to 60 max left over.
It's unobligated.
About 22 unobligated, and then, I mean, most things we allocated it to are spending, or will be, so, which is good, right? But leaves us with little to play with.
Thanks, Sarah. I think we've covered the questions. I don't want to make you stand there and work it out with this.
Actually, Sarah, before, Sarah?
Appreciate you coming in.
Before you go, I just, I do want to say, appreciate you coming here tonight and addressing us and apologizing for the way this worked out. I do want you to know that FCS is a great resource for our town, and include us in the conversation early, but don't feel like this is something that you have to, you know, hide from. Like, it's water under the bridge now, we'll deal with it, and we're all going to move on, but the partnership is really important. So please communicate with us, come to us, and be a great partner with us.
For sure, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Great, thanks, Sarah. So we've spent a lot of time on $21,000 out of a $16 million budget, but do we have any further questions about other items for Jessica? We have been pounding on this for quite a while, and we've had several workshops, public workshops and public hearings. But it is crunch time, it's June 18th, and fiscal year ends July 30, June 30th. We have to give time to Jessica to be able to prepare for this. Dan.
I do have one question more just for the council to get a read of where we are, but I think we're all supportive of the property tax relief program. We kind of take a stab in the dark at how much money to allocate to it because we just don't know. We tried to get as much data as we could. I think the max relief we offer is $750,000, $750,000 per family that would be eligible, $750,000, it's in that range, yeah. So, and I look at the numbers, and it's just a very large increase in general for the year, so I'm looking at ways to save money. So is there any appetite to reduce the $100,000 that we allocated to it to $50,000 and see how it goes? And we can always add to it next year.
I totally oppose that. I think it's a slap in the face to the citizens. We have the obligation to help them out, and there's other places we can find, but we just don't have the appetite.
Like, I think it's a question, right, of the logistics of it, right? Is $100,000 at $750 an application? It's not as though if we have X number of applicants at $750 each, and it totals something less than $100,000, people can come back for a second round, that will be the limit. So it's a function of the math. And I know Sophie roughed it out based on the folks that applied for the state stabilization program last year, but that wasn't income-based, there weren't other criteria, so the number, I think he gave us, was really high, and we came down from it a little bit. But I think it's a product of, is $100,000, will it just sit there? And will we spend 30? Will we spend 70? Will we spend whatever? Is there a way for us to structure it in a different way? Should, I mean, I guess we'll still, we'd still have to obligate it if we went with a lesser amount and then with an ability to increase. I think that logistically might be a challenge. But I think it's a question not of, is the program worthy? It's a question of, are we actually physically going to be able to spend all of that money? And if we're not, have we just set a ridiculously high number that is now a burden to the taxpayers?
I'll just add in, I don't disagree with that logic at all, Matt, but there are about 50 items in this budget where we could probably say the same thing, and we rely on our staff to give us that information and tell us, this is what we think it's going to cost. But there are plenty of other items in the operating budget, let alone the capital budget, where we're making estimates all the time about what expenses are going to be, consumables, utilities, insurance costs, all of those things. So I think we're, I think we're overlooking the larger picture if we start to think that the seven of us up here have that kind of budget expertise to be able to predict what it's going to be. So I'm hesitant to start getting right down to that little detail over staff's recommendations.
No, I completely agree with that point. I'm also cognizant of the fact that this is a new program that has no historical data.
Yeah.
The town's never implemented it, we have no knowledge about what the, I mean, it was a shot in the dark, and when we debated at the committee level, we just put a number in for people to react to, and then, so that's my, that's the only reason I agree with you, we don't need to start questioning every line, but this one, there's just no historical data on it.
Right, but when we picked the number, we started out at a very high number based on other towns, and then we came down to this number. So I'm opposed to changing that number.
I can't remember if we read the be it ordered. We did?
Yes.
We did, okay.
But it needs to be amended to.
Needs to be amended anyways for the $3,000 for the conservation operating funds to be able to do what we asked them to do.
Are you open to any other comments?
And we have a number of other items on there. Yeah, sure. Please limit it to three minutes. It's not a public hearing, so we're not going to get into a debate, but if folks have a public comment, it's your budget.
Well, that's exactly my point. It is my budget, but I don't know how much my taxes are going to increase because I don't see a percentage at the end of this point. When Jessica put it together, I could get a rough idea back in April, but now there's nothing here. In fact, there's nothing in the agenda saying, here's the bottom line. How much is the mill rate going to go up? And even better than that, a nice percentage. Now, I think it's something around 15%, and I'm pretty shocked about how high that increase is. And I haven't heard any of the counselors, perhaps the exception of two of you, saying, whoa, that's a pretty high increase. So next time, it's too late for this budget, but next year I'd like to see a more open statement of, here's what is going to be effect on your taxes, on your tax.
I will point out, Travis, that we have actually published that and put that out on previous budget workshops, and there's two impacts because of the way municipal government funding works, the town budget and then the final tax levy to the taxpayers. Those are not the same number because of all the other income sources that come in. So there's an increase in the town budget, which is different from a potential increase in the town levy that the taxpayer, property owners, pay. And I was just advised that with these amendments, it's a 92 cent increase, and that's 92 cents in the mill rate, which is 92 cents higher per thousand evaluation.
That's not just us.
It's not a percentage, and it's not now stated. I know it was stated back in the first, but I don't know, it's been changed.
8.45% is what that works out to.
Thank you.
On the tax rate.
And I would just like to further clarify that the 92 cents reference is based off of existing values. So that's why it's difficult to give mill rate impacts because, as you were indicating, there's a whole nother side that impacts the actual mill rate through the assessing department and the valuations of property. So we do, we give you a guideline based off of where we are currently at for, under the current mill rate structure, right? But it's not guaranteed. And I think if you historically look back at what I projected the mill rate's going to be, it's never the same because of those other factors that change with valuation. So that's.
Right. It also stayed the same or declined from 2013 to 2023.
Exactly.
The mill rate.
Exactly.
Declined.
Yes. Yep, because of that other side, despite, through the budget process, me telling you there was, I think it was a 46 cent last year, you know, impact that we were projecting if everything stayed the same. But nothing stays the same, so that's why that other side changes.
But the amount of money that we're raising is fixed, it's just how.
Yes, the, yes, the budget percentage that you give, that percentage increase, that's a finite number that you can give, that's a one-for-one. But the mill rate is, there's too many variables and subjective factors before the budget process, you know, that get done after the budget process is complete, that we just cannot reasonably say. I would not want it put out there to residents that it's a 92 cent increase with finality because it's just not. You know, there's too many other factors that are going to play into what that final number is that people will see on their tax bills.
Thanks for that correction. Thank you.
The only thing I'd want to clarify is that it's not subjective, it's objective. It's just not in finance, it's in the assessing.
And that 92 cents is inclusive of the school and the county transfer as well?
Sure, yeah.
Our portion of that's only 38 cent increase.
30.
37.75.
Yep.
Jonas, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you. My name is Jonas Warner, I live here in Freeport. I serve on the Board of Directors for Freeport Community Services. And I just wanted to touch base briefly about the discussion you're having about what's going on, not the big part, but smaller part, that now we've come to taking away funding from FCS. Obviously, I feel, not obviously, but I feel like this is extremely unfortunate situation that we're in. And as has been pointed out, this has been a responsibility and an expense that FCS has bore for the last three years at a much higher rate than we were being compensated for. I would very much personally like for us to work this out. In the meantime, however, you're talking about taking away $21,000 in funding at a very difficult time for nonprofits like FCS. I think Sarah spoke very well about what it's like, where the rubber meets the road. Things are not good. We're in post-COVID recovery. During COVID, there was all kinds of money flying around from the federal government. Lots of people got extremely rich, most people did not, and some people were pushed into poverty that were never in poverty, and some people were pushed deeper into poverty. Freeport Community Services is one of the places where those people go for help. In the meantime, in post-COVID recovery, all the money that was flying around from governments, and all the money that people were giving from the goodness of their heart has been declining. Donations across the country going down. Grants because of the increased poverty, grants, there's more demand forever than grants. Grant funding is going down for organizations like ours. And so now you're talking about taking away another $21,000, our own town, from the people that need it the most to help other people that need it the most. I know it's, it sounds bizarre. I just hope that that's not the solution. Thank you.
Okay, so we had some amendments to the FY25 operating budget for the municipalities next fiscal year. The amended amount of $16,000,091,058 includes the additional $3,000 for the Conservation Commission's maintenance and upkeep activities, which we asked them to do, which was an oversight for that to be left out. And the unclassified item in the appropriations is where that $3,000 lives, so that 3398050 will be amended to 3401050, as was outlined by Jessica earlier. So that number includes the $21,000, and it's been moved and seconded. Do we want to have a special discussion about what we've just spent the last 45 minutes on, or do we want to have a vote on this number?
Do you want to move it as amended with the $3,000 in it?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I'm ready to vote.
So the appropriation would be $16,000,091,058, which includes the $21,000 that is in the budget today that has been previously designated for FCS prior to the change in GA administration contract. All those in favor of that budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, four to three. Budget carries. Okay, so that's our operating budget as amended, $16,091,058 for revenues and appropriations, with the unclassified line being amended to $3,401,050. Our next item is to consider action relative to the capital budget.
Can you also amend, or also, just to make sure we're on the same page, we're amending this number?
Oh, the amount raised by taxation, we have to articulate that?
No, as long as you all agree, are we okay? As long as you all understand.
It's $9,184,333. It's $9,184,333.
Yep, revenues must equal expenses.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, and that passed four to three. Item number 178-24 is appropriations made for the capital budget?
Yep.
For FY25?
Yep.
Presented on the agenda totaling $1,740,000. Just a reminder for the general public, the capital budget is expenditures that the town makes on hard assets, non-consumable goods, and assets that are over $5,000 in value that become part of the town's inventory of assets. It has been the practice for a number of years, maybe 10 or more, maybe even more than that, that the entirety of the town's capital budget is funded out of a reserve account with no burden on the tax levy. In other words, we do a good job as stewards of your public to save money for capital items by making special allocations for those where we can see the capital item coming, like public safety equipment, which is very expensive, and other investments in our hard assets, like we just talked about with $3,000 for mowing the grass for our conservation commission to keep our public spaces neat and tidy and accessible. So the capital budget is a significant part of our overall spending, but it is not carried by the tax levy. It is carried by a series of reserve accounts, which we have been fiscally responsible for managing to be able to cover all of those expenses for at least 10, maybe 12 years or more, thanks to the great leadership and stewardship of our finance director and our staff, and as well by decisions made by previous councils to establish those reserve accounts and to fund them. So we have, thanks for indulging in that little bit of explanation. It took me a long time to understand the difference between capital and operating budgets and how they affect the tax bill. So I forget where we are with who's introducing the items here.
To me, I think.
Okay. Dan, could you please read the be it ordered to get the capital budget onto the table for discussion?
And be it further ordered?
There are two.
Okay. Do you want me to list the total amounts?
Yes.
Be it ordered that the following appropriations be made for the capital items project listed below, and that the capital budget for FY2025 be adopted as presented on the agenda totaling $1,740,000. Be it further ordered that the amounts be appropriated from the reserve funds to provide for items approved as presented on the agenda. Item 174-24 totaling $1,740,000.
Second.
One more. Be it further ordered that the following appropriations be made for the items and projects listed below, and that the destination TIF and Concord Gully Brook TIF budgets for FY2025 be adopted as presented below totaling $267,325.
Second. All right, so three segments of the capital budget. We've had a number of workshops and plenty of explanation and great input from town staff on the items in the capital budget for purchase upcoming, as well as discussion of the five-year capital plan. My personal opinion is that our staff does an excellent job of planning that capital budget so that we can be strategic about when we make a six-digit or even a seven-digit investment in a piece of equipment, and that we can plan for it, which allows us to be able to do it out of the reserve account. So the first element of the budget is the 1.740, $1,740,000. I think we might have some adjustments on the other two, but do we have any adjustments on the first element of this capital budget related to town asset investment funded by the reserve accounts? All right, so the order is in, I'm sorry, the motion is in three elements, so we'll assume agreement on that one for right now. And the next one is the destination TIF, which we have some...
Where you want to bring it out of reserve would be the second element.
Paying for the expenses.
Yeah, so it's just, it's...
So we can, we can do each one individually? Is that what you're telling me?
No, what I'm saying is you went from this one to this one, but your third one is here.
The first two are tied together.
Right. Okay. Well, maybe I'm still not sure. Are we taking a vote on the 1.74?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, I just, you said that there was an issue with this one, the second one, and I want to just make sure.
I meant the destination TIF.
Okay, all right. Disregard me.
So in the destination TIF, we have a little bit of an adjustment. We had a long conversation about staff changes and bringing the economic development director position into existence within town government, and shifting that allocation of funding from FEDC, which is the Freeport Economic Development Council Corporation's standalone 501(c)(3) that has been providing excellent guidance and direction administration of economic development activities for years, many years. And through the, we were all present, or most of us were present at the workshop last week, and we made that announcement public, although we've been working on it for a while, to make adjustments in the allocation of funding for FEDC. So we have a couple of adjustments here on the final destination TIF dollar amounts. Within the schedule, we have $45,000 that we're allocating for adjustments to sidewalks. And Earl, maybe this is where we go from brick to asphalt. I don't know if that's part of the scope of work that we're talking about. And then the second item in the destination TIF is economic development activities. And I'm going to let Sophie explain the adjustments from what you have printed in your agenda.
So what you have printed in your agenda is simply $177,326 for economic development activities, based on our conversations and limited guidance from last Tuesday. I've broken that out. So we have $152,325, which is for town economic development, which is wages, benefits, and some salary for the first year of having our own economic development director. And council asked me, I think, to come up with a way to fund a contribution to FEDC. There was really no guidance as to what range that contribution should be. So to just put a placeholder in, I had put $25,000 originally into the, into the budget. The thing that I did that, I don't know if it was actually what you wanted, but it seemed like a good idea to me, is I looked at what the destination TIF had for a balance, went back through each project with Jessica to find out what we could unencumber with Earl for current and future projects, and came up with a different balance. And again, that balance is because we're letting go of some of the capital reserves that would not have normally been the way we have budgeted. And came up with a projected end balance that's a little higher than we had predicted for FY24. So because we are unencumbering those capital budgets, it's sliding back into the fund balance for the TIF. And instead of being $244,000 in the hole at the end of 2025, we, if we allocated the money for economic, town economic development activities, and then John, Mary, and I, Mary is the president of FEDC, met earlier today. Do you want to take it, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I think as a result of the workshop that we had last week, we concurred that FEDC's function is vital and important and valued by the, by the town as well as the town council, and that the continuation of that function necessarily requires that that organization have some functioning staff. I don't think there was any discussion at all that that was not valid. And so we were trying to find if there's a little bit of flexibility in the destination TIF in order to provide a little bit of a bridge for staffing at FEDC so that they can pivot to their new role as an advisor to the town's economic development director, recognizing that their previous allocations have been to support the economic developer position, which is now going to be a town person. So I think the description and the gravity of that position supporting FEDC is different. It is not going to be an economic development director because we have the economic development director position within Town Hall. And in recognizing in the balance there of trying to continue with FEDC's purpose and function, they have some residual funds in their balance. And Sophie and I were talking if we were able to have a placeholder of approximately $55,000 to $60,000 out of the TIF to be able to direct that towards FEDC over the next coming year to provide that continuity, and that that would be the end of the TIF funding for FEDC. And that another part of that workshop last week was an offer to have a small group work on additional fundraising and finance or revenue sources for that valued function that's not coming out of the TIF. Matt?
Is the 55 to 60,000 that you referenced inclusive of the 25 that's already been budgeted, or in addition to?
It's inclusive.
Inclusive.
Dan?
Just to clarify, the $177,325, did that include the $25,000 contribution to FEDC, or was that $25,000 in addition to?
That was, that included the 25 to FEDC. You saw another from what was originally done that included another 25 on town, on the town side. We eliminated that.
Okay. I'm looking at Jessica's memo, which had $177,000 for activities plus $25,000 for...
She sent, she gave you an updated one, an updated page just tonight.
Okay, got it.
So we listened to the guidance that a very knowledgeable council vice chair provided.
So the discussion for this evening is requiring timely action because FEDC wants to have some sense if they're going to have the capacity to redefine their staff position and then go hire that person. They have some resources internally to do that. We, I think, I think, we affirmed last week at the workshop that we all continue to agree that they provide a valuable voice and service to the community, which we hope continues, and that that's not going to happen on a bunch of volunteer time. So the idea is to at least have a placeholder in the destination TIF, which we have some flexibility, and we can revisit later in the FY25, but to at least have that in there so that they can have some certainty and some continuity with their staffing going forward.
So clarifying question, I guess a language thing, what's the difference between a placeholder, how we address it in our relationship with them versus allocating that to them?
So if you allocate something as a single contribution, that gives Jessica the authority to take a request from them and cut a check. A placeholder allows you to have conversation with them, whatever it is you want, and then give a future direction to staff to give them the funds.
So it sounds like it would be more collaborative, right? We would work together.
It is. And the purpose of this method is because we have not yet had that small group discussion about exactly what their staff position is going to look like or what their needs are going to be. But it allows us to give them an indication that there is going to be money available in the TIF should that come up and should that need be there. That's the purpose of it.
Did we clarify how much cushion they have available to them?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's in the vicinity of the number that Brett was talking about at the workshop.
$70,000.
Yeah. I didn't get an exact number, but it's in that vicinity.
Seventies, what they were mentioning last week. Oh, plus another 20 in savings.
I thought I heard, I thought I heard Brett say that was inclusive of all the accounts, but maybe not. So anyway, that's the reason why we need to have more discussion with them. And we're trying to get this done so that we can have a finalized budget to end our fiscal year, but still have some room to talk with them about their continued function.
And would that be, with the placeholder, and if there is a need for it, would that be a leadership conversation, a council leadership, or council conversation? What would that look like when we're deciding what to do with those funds in the future?
It is up to us to define what that is. So I'm wide open to input. My offer, rather spontaneously last week at the workshop, was to get a small group so that we get some traction and get some momentum going forward, but that any of those decisions would absolutely come back here to this council. In a timely manner, so that it's this council.
So when did you have that conversation? I'm just trying to sort out, because there was an email to us at like 12:43, and it references dollar amounts?
Five...
Yeah.
Thirty.
Post that reference.
Yeah, 5:30 this evening.
Okay, thanks.
So is the final number that's being proposed, the 177,325, which includes 25,000, and then we're adding an additional 30,000 to make that $55,000 placeholder?
So we can do that. I had put in for mathematics 60,000, because that's the number that, the last number I heard.
Yeah.
But we can add, we can subtract 5,000 easily if you want.
So it's $257,325.
For the destination.
Is the sum expenses coming out of the TIF.
Can you say that number again, to what?
For every...
The total.
Two hundred...
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five.
For the destination Freeport. That does not include the 45,000 for Concord Gully. So the two of those together, under the be it further ordered order, would be 302,325.
So does that 257 number, does that put us in the hole?
No.
That's the, that's all the money that's in there?
That, that's, there's, that's within the funding available within the TIF after reviewing the projects that had been previously appropriated that have either been completed or are not going to be.
So Jessica graciously is not saying that her boss messed up when she was reciting numbers. I accidentally recited the total expense line. The ending projected fund balance after, if you approve it at the number we've just been talking about, is $183,418.
Left in the TIF.
Left in the TIF.
Okay.
Assuming that we bring...
Bring money in.
Money, the money in, that we have every year.
And there was a point made, I just want to revisit, where that would be the end of FEDC's recipients of this TIF funds?
I think my understanding is that the small group is going to get together and work moving forward, John, or, yeah, and bring back a plan.
But the TIF was generally used to fund FEDC, and it's going away, so.
Right.
Because it's at the end of its life.
Right, the TIF matures.
Yeah.
In just, in just two or three fiscal years. All right, so in order to get the record straight, we have a capital budget for the town of $1,740,000, and the amended amounts of the TIF portion of the budget of $302,325.
That is correct.
So those are the amended amounts in the TIF. Maybe we'll reread the be it ordered to get that into the record.
All three of them?
Yeah.
So to replace the previous motion, or to amend it, I suppose, be it ordered that the following appropriations be made for the capital items projects listed below, and that the capital budget for FY2025 be adopted as presented on the agenda totaling $1,740,000. Be it further ordered that the following amounts be appropriated from the reserve funds to provide for items approved as presented... reserve funds to provide for items approved as presented on the agenda, item 174-24 totaling $1,740,000. And be it further ordered that the following appropriations be made for the items and projects listed below and that the Destination Freeport TIF and Concord Gully Brook TIF budgets for FY 2025 be adopted as presented below totaling $302,325.
Second. And just the as presented below with, with the amendments. All right. So that is our capital budget for FY 25 as amended. Any last questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Six to one. Capital budget is approved.
Who was the name?
Dan. All right. So that is our operating budget and our capital budget approved. Well done, councilors. Our next item on the agenda is public comment from virtual participants. Do we have any hands up or folks in the electronic world that would like to make public comments?
Nope, we have the media and the town clerk.
Okay. Our last item is other business on the Climate Action Plan. We had a workshop from the Sustainability Board outlining the details of the Climate Action Plan coming forward. We specifically did not take a vote on that because there's quite a bit in there for us to digest. So I'm open to suggestions. And rather than me just kind of making up a schedule of when we're going to start working on this, I'd love to have some input if there are folks that would like to dissect this into, let's say, more manageable bites than the eight or nine very tall recommendations in the Climate Action Plan, all of which are fabulous and founded in the most important stuff that we have to be working on, but are not all something that we could swallow as a council in one bite. So I'm open to suggestions on that.
So are you, are you talking, sorry, about the implementation specifically or the plan as a whole? Because my, my understanding was that we might adopt the plan as a whole, but separately adopt different priorities in terms of the implementation.
I have an opinion on that, but I wasn't presuming that that decision had already been made. So I'm, I'm open to that suggestion as well. So I don't want to sway the conversation. So I really want to hear from everybody.
Some of the questions I have, I'll be getting some answers this week, but it's interesting the state come out and say we're on track at the state levels to meet the, you know, recommended decline in carbon footprint by, what was it, 2045 if I remember right. So if I, I'm looking at, you know, our, if we're on track at the state level and there's a lot of indications we're doing very positive things in the United States or with some of the renewals or whatever, you know, how much more do we need? So I think, I'd like to have more public comment because I know there's a number of people, as this plan is written, are very concerned of more government regulations possibly coming down their way. So I think we would definitely probably need more public education and maybe more public comment before we adopt it is my personal recommendation.
Yep. I agree.
I agree. And then we need to put what the goals are and how to measure those goals and see if we're hitting them.
Right. I think we had talked about, or I had talked about, sort of the, the dream being during our visioning and goal setting every year, polling what we think would be achievable from this Climate Action Plan, so.
There are a whole lot of elements in that plan as well as other activities that various groups are taking up in the community that really kind of flip this from a government top-down to a resident bottom-up, which I really like. And I would really love to be able to take the Climate Action Plan and couch it in that perspective of what the community as a whole and as individuals are able to do collectively to focus on resilience and being able to adapt to changes in the climate, rather than just listening to the council saying, we're going to do 20 of these and 15 of those, to actually find out what does that mean? What do these changes actually mean to individual residents, neighborhoods, town assets, and what can we do as a community to provide resilience and redundancy in, in reacting to climate changes that are coming? I think that's a, an argument that a lot of people are going to be much more interested in hearing than 21 of these and 15 of that. So. But I think it's important to have the outline of the plan in front of us while we're doing that so that we can be containing and defining those things within the plan. But to get to your question, Eric, I think, I still think we're a little bit out from actually adopting the plan until we can better identify a trajectory of how we're going to hit some of those priorities and how we're going to line them up.
I guess one question I had is, we, we've had a workshop with the Sustainability Advisory Board. We had public comment at that meeting that was not necessarily at the workshop because this wasn't on the agenda of that meeting. But I don't know that we have, I don't think we have rules about having a public hearing, for example, on this sort of plan. But part of my question is, should we have a public hearing?
Yes.
And when, and so should we go ahead and set a public hearing?
Yeah. I, I think so. And to get to Darrell's comment earlier, I think if nothing else, we need, we need to be sharing this more and listening, but also sharing what the research in, in the plan illustrates so that people can be more informed about what's coming. July and August are horrible times to be scheduling educational forums indoors on, you know, some hot Thursday night. So I'm not sure what the timing would look like for that. Sophie?
I was just going to ask, if we're going to do that, do we want to shift the presentation of the implementation table if council is already thinking that it does not necessarily want to be doing, you know, 14 discrete tasks within the next six to 12 months? You know, is there, I just, I don't know what you want the public hearing on. And my fear is if you've kind of moved beyond and have a different vision for the implementation strategy, that if you have a public hearing with that implementation strategy, you're probably going to get most of the focus there because it's taking on a lot of things that will require additional staffing and resources.
Totally agree. I'm hesitant to give any indication or flag that we're parking this thing and putting it off because that's the, in my opinion, the worst outcome is that people say, oh, well, it's not important because we're not talking about it. So I really am hesitant to, to say, let's, you know, put it over here while we do this. I think it's a, we're going to, and I'm struggling for the vocabulary here, I think we're going to redefine what an implementation and adoption of the plan looks like by having more conversations. And maybe a long time ago, we used to have budget conversations out in neighborhoods. And I'm wondering if maybe there's an opportunity to have neighborhood conversations about climate mitigation and, and what climate resiliency really is.
I would say having meetings outside when it's 90 degrees is not a terrible time to have a Climate Action Plan conversation. But I, I do think that we need to have some small group conversations. And one of my questions, this does not fit within a council committee.
Yeah.
Per se. And should we have an ad hoc committee to just try to work through this and come back? But I really like the idea of having district meetings or neighborhood meetings because part of, as, as we talked about, I think the part of this implementation plan that really is very community focused rather than mandate and certainly not government mandate focused is the community resiliency piece.
Yeah.
Where we are going to be enlisting neighborhoods and, and parts of the community to really be developing and part their own plan for how they are going to implement some of these things.
Yeah, I think you basically said exactly what I was going to say, Councilor Smith. And I think the model of going out into the community with information should not just be for the Climate Action Plan, but we should try and reinstate that for many discussions we have as a council. So definitely for that.
Darrell?
I think we're looking maybe at a new communications person coming down. We've got a new website that's going to be a lot more friendly to navigate. You know, I think we need to take a little bit of a breather through the summer months. We come back in September. I don't want to wait till the council sets the goals in January. I think that's too far. But I, I still think the message is not getting out. And maybe if we do a town mailer or something, because I am not hearing all the accolades that a lot of people are sitting here from, from the people that are talking to me. They're nervous, they're concerned. So, and, and I think it's a good, we really need to do a good job of education, and we haven't done that today.
Can I make a suggestion, maybe? Feel free to disregard it. I'm hearing John's concern about not wanting people to think that we're just letting it sit. So I would suggest, if you're looking at a public hearing in September, that why couldn't you go ahead and set it in July? We can put that out there. We can create a Climate Action page on the website along with directions to the Climate Action website. But I think, so that's my first suggestion. My second suggestion is I do think it would be very helpful for me to have a couple of councilors that are willing to kind of think about what does an education process look like? How do we get feedback? I've got some ideas, but how do we kind of get this education out there? And then if we could maybe implement it in the August, September range.
I think that's an excellent idea, that we could set, we could set these meetings and discussions or schedule them at our next meeting in July, just to get them on the public calendar, and then we can start talking about it through our channels of communication, however limited they may be right now, and to have those gatherings start in September. I think that's an excellent idea.
Great, great point.
Can you get two councilors that would agree to?
So not necessarily council leadership, Councilor Smith and Benoit. That'd be great if the two of you would start that off. And a lot of this will be publicized, noticed meetings, so more than two of us can show up for those conversations. Don't feel like the rest of us are boxed out. So love to have that get going. Thanks very much for volunteering.
I was going to say, and I would be your staff liaison.
What was I talking to you about capacity earlier today and how I don't, I don't recognize it? Yeah, here we go.
Tell the new sustainability coordinator.
Yes.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Secured it.
Hang on, before we take that vote, Ken, you may be waiting for what's being signed right here, which is your, some kind of, some kind of permit?
Liquor license.
Liquor license, some kind of renewal?
I would kind of...
Well, it's moving down. I thought maybe you were here to take it up so you can go to Augusta tomorrow morning with it or something.
I do have to do that.
Yeah. So we're getting it signed.
Can you wait till Thursday morning?
We're getting it signed right now.
Chris need to do something.
If you need me to, why? Do you have other mail that needs to be delivered?
No.
I'll help you with that, buddy.
Save 60 cents.
I think that there's, there might be something that Chris needs to do that I don't know what it is with your liquor license. So we'll be open, can you wait till Thursday or does that put you behind?
It puts us behind, but I'll do it.
Okay, well, here.
Augusta's closed tomorrow. It's a holiday. Augusta's closed tomorrow.
That's true.
Oh, Chris just texted me. Don't let him leave with it. Sorry, I tried.
If, if Chris says I can't leave with it, I can't.
Yeah. I mean, we like you and all.
I know you're the one.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, non?
Thank you, John.
I'm actually on the boards of both FEDC and FCF, so it's pretty...
[inaudible][1022.12]